When is your call with the appraiser? Can I invite the board? And Tony? To join? Emmett Logue. C R B. Emmett Logue, C B R E. Emmett Logue, Appraiser. Fine news of Emmett Logue, Appraiser. Emmett Logue, Appraiser. Fine news of Emmett Logue, Appraiser. Fine news of Emmett Logue, Appraiser.
Hey Gene. Hey Joe.
Yeah, I'm here Tony. I said hi to Gene but he went mute.
He's muted on us. Gene, can you hear us?
Zero, am I on?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, now we can hear you. Joe said hello. Gene.
Yeah.
Joe said hello to you.
Hello Joe.
Hello Gene. Traps can go in the water now. They opened up the season today.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, early. No whales.
Oh wow.
Everybody's fighting for a spot down at the wharf.
There's enough room for everybody.
Hey Josh.
Hey Gene, how are you?
Good.
Yeah Joe, they weren't gonna, they had until the 15th, right? Is that how that works?
No, it's uh, to the 16th unless no whales are spotted in the neighborhood. So we're eight days early. I don't think anyone's ready to go in, we all thought we had another week.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking, it's like, ah, it's nice that it's early, but it's also, you know, kind of inconvenient too.
The good thing is we got the uh, the slip all cleaned. Ahead of time.
Yep, I think, I don't think.
I'm not here yet.
Hey Rob.
Good evening.
Good Rob.
Yeah, I think, I think we lucked out as far as lobster, lobstermen are concerned, the uh, the boats got cleared away obviously this past weekend, so now they've got plenty of room to bring their, their traps down, get them stacked on the wall without competing for space.
Hey Tony, this notification, this Zoom notification that this meeting is being sent to a third party, is that YouTube or something like that?
Yes, that's the live stream.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, we can't open up until we have a chairman.
Well, I'm gonna substitute for a little while.
That's what I thought.
We'll give it another minute or two.
We can open with the quorum, we'll go with the quorum.
All right. All right, well a few people are still trickling in, but um, it is 6:30. So, um, it's 6:30 PM, May 8th, 2024, and then the hot board of selectmen meeting is now in session. Um, first let's welcome the board of selectmen's newest member, Selectman Robert Tibbo. Rob's already been sworn in by our town clerk Diane, and uh, we're ready to get to work for the town. Rob, we have a busy year ahead, and uh, Selectman Canty and I look forward to great collaboration.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to a very productive year.
Yeah.
We're expecting great things from you, Mr. Tibbo.
I'll try not to disappoint Mr. Canty.
Yeah, yeah, we got a busy year ahead, so should be interesting. Uh, and normally we begin the selectmen's meeting with opening comments, but um, too excited to wait for that, uh, so before we get to opening comments, we have some important, important business to take care of. Um, this is the moment that I, and I, I think really all of humanity has been waiting for for two years, the reorganization of the hot board of selectmen. So uh, Selectman Canty, do we have a motion?
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
No.
I don't really want to make one on my own behalf here. But uh, if you don't.
Can I step in?
You absolutely can.
All right, I move to appoint Joshua Antrim as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
I second it.
Any discussion? This is your last chance. Hearing and seeing none, roll call.
You guys need a motion?
Yes.
Yep.
Your motion has been made by Rob.
Seconded by Gene.
Um, so, roll call vote?
Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye.
Thank you guys. Uh, I guess that makes it official. Um, I'll make a motion, I move to appoint Gene Canty as Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
I second that. I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing seeing none, uh, roll call vote? Uh, Josh Antrim, aye?
Yeah, Rob Tibbo, aye.
Um, are you gonna abstain? Uh, Gene, I forget whether we. Uh, I'll make the next motion as well, I move to appoint Robert Tibbo as the Recording Secretary of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I guess I'll just say thanks again Rob for stepping up, um, um, you know, really, really appreciate it, and I think the town in the hot will also appreciate your decision to help out, so thank you very much. Okay, roll call vote?
Gene Canty, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye?
Rob Tibbo, present.
Okay, um, opening comments, before we get started on some of these opening comments, there's, there's some sad news to share, um, and some good news to share, um, uh, this past week, um, Henry Clausen, uh, who was a member of FinCom for 27 years, that's a long time to serve the town, uh, unfortunately has passed away. So uh, we remember Henry and thank him for his contribution to the town. Um, also, uh, the hot's renowned sculptor Ray Pizzano, uh, passed away this week at age 101, and uh, he was working right up until his death, as I understand it, he also served, um, his country in Army's 51st Engineer Combat Battalion during World War II. Um, so we say goodbye to Ray, and um,
He was one, he was one of five of our last remaining living, uh, veterans of World War II.
Yeah, and he's has some quite notable sculptures in Lynn and the hot, most people, um, will recognize the sculpture of the, um, Tectonic Eclipse, I think it's called, in front of the hot town library, um, he also has one at the Valley Road School. Um, so, um, goodbye to Mr. Pizzano, and then, um, John Miletty, uh, longtime hot resident, fisherman, lobsterman, uh, part of a big, uh, family here in the hot, lot of relatives, unfortunately passed away suddenly this, uh, Monday, I guess, um, uh, excuse me, a week ago Monday, um, his services were today, so, um, sad news for the Miletty family, um. On a positive note, um, Sergeant Mason Schultz, uh, has returned home to the hot after serving five and a half years in the United States Army, um, I think Mason is, uh, leaving, um, Army full-time service and plans to pursue his higher education, um, Mason, I see you're on the call, um. Army full-time service and plans to pursue his higher education. Um, Mason, I see you're on the call. Um, thank you for your service and uh, welcome back home and, and, and good luck in the future. Uh, you're welcome to say anything, uh, add anything if you'd like to unmute yourself, but uh, if not, uh, welcome home.
Thank you for your service. Welcome home.
Likewise.
Thank you, Mason. I'm glad you're back.
Okay, um, some opening comments here. Strides Along the Tide Five Cave Road Race is Saturday, May eleventh, twenty twenty four. That's this Saturday, beginning at eight thirty AM on the hot road in front of Veterans Park, starts on Castle Road. Um, the race route and more information can be found on the community calendar at nahat.org. Uh, annual, annual town meeting is Saturday, May eighteenth, uh, at twelve thirty PM at the Nahat Town Hall. Uh, Tony's gonna give us a little update on that later on. Um, there's a ha, there's a couple hazardous waste collection days coming up on May eighteenth, August thirty first, and October twelfth, from eight AM to twelve noon at the Lynn DPW. I think that's the one off of um, the end of Commercial Street in, in the Linway. Um, certain fees, fees apply. For a list of accepted material, cost and more, visit the community calendar on nahat.org for more information. Uh, metal and white goods, TVs, computers, etcetera, recycling is the last Saturday of each month from eight AM to twelve PM, noon, behind the DPW garage. Resident parking sticker is required. Certain fees may apply. Visit nahat.org for a list of accepted materials. Um, there's a couple um, friendly pickup days left. Um, Monday, May sixth, which is in the past, uh, May thirteenth and May twentieth. Bags must be biodegradable, must, excuse me, bags must be biodegradable and out on the curb by seven AM. No open barrels, roots, roots balls, or branches. Uh, the compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. A twenty twenty four resident sticker is required. Visit the Public Works page at nahat.org for a full list of acceptable material. Um, as a reminder, no dogs are allowed on the beaches from May first through September thirtieth, uh, with of course the exception of Doggy Beach. Uh, parking stickers, the twenty twenty four resident parking stickers are available for purchase at nahat.org. Stickers are ten dollars each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town and the census completed before purchasing. And I do believe that goes up to twenty dollars each at, on June first, so um, order before midnight tonight. Uh, local TV channel.
Actually, we haven't taken that vote, so those, they'll remain, they'll remain at ten.
Okay, all right. They will be higher next year, so um, brace yourself. Uh, local TV channel, we're being updated on a regular basis with important uh, updates on our cable channels. Tune into Comcast Channel Eight and Verizon Channel Forty-five. Town Hall Intern, the Town Hall is seeking two college-age individuals for part-time summer internship. Visit the Employment Opportunities page at nahat.org for full job description. If interested, please send a cover letter and resume to kaytaylor@nahat.org. Uh, we have some vacant seats that we're hoping to fill soon. Uh, the Board of Library Trustees and the Board of Assessors both have open seats. If you're interested, please send a letter of interest to kaytaylor@nahat.org. And the hot market by the sea is uh, planned for the summer on Saturdays, June twenty second, July twentieth, August seventeenth, and December, September fourteenth, from ten AM to one PM at Flash Road Park. Uh, this is, uh, was formerly uh, called Farmer's Market, I think, so uh, if you don't recognize that new name, uh, not Market by the Sea. To become a, a vendor, visit the market page at nahat.org for application. Um, Gene or uh, Rob, do you have any um, opening comments you'd like to make?
No, I have none.
Uh, Josh, if I could just add one, one last uh, piece to the, the list you just read, uh, if uh, folks have a, a boat with a mooring here in town and they happen to be updating their parking stickers, it would be great if they could uh, complete the mooring application at the same time.
That's a, a great suggestion, and um, I was thinking we were gonna have a motion that uh, selectmen get free wharf storage for life? Is that true?
I think the best you can hope for is possibly a, a, a gold sticker for parking, but you know, don't push your luck.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, if there's no uh, additional opening comments, we'll move on to new business. Um, so um, there is a, an exciting event coming up this Saturday, uh, not this Saturday, uh, on Saturday, July thirteenth, hosted by the Nahat Tennis at the Nahat Ten, Ten, excuse me, Nahat Country Club, celebrating the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the first lawn tennis game in America. Um, I happen to have gone to the International Tennis Hall of Fame in Newport, Rhode Island, um, in February, and um, saw Nahat's mentioned there as the first site of tennis in America. Um, highly recommend, recommend that as a trip. It's really interesting. Um, so that's on uh, July thirteenth. The reigning date is Sunday, July fourteenth. It will run from eight thirty AM to two PM. In the morning, there'll be a round robin tournament with players in Victorian dress in wooden brackets. Uh, at noon, there will be a luncheon which features presentations on tennis by Tim Maet, Maet, who was a former uh, world top ten player, and by Dan Sears, great grandson of Dick Sears, the first American tennis champion. Uh, after lunch, Tim Maet will play an exhibition match with local top junior players, so that, that should be fun. Spectators and players are, are welcome. Uh, please go to the website at nahatennis.org for more information. And along with that, we have a uh, a resolution which I can read. Um, this is a resolution commemorating the first game of tennis in America, played in the hot at eighteen seventy four on the occasion of its hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Whereas in August of eighteen seventy four, the first lawn tennis court in America was set up on the lawn of Colonel William Appleton's estate on East Point by Dr. James S. Warren Dwight and his cousin Frank R. Sears, whose family were summer, summer residents of the hot, and whereas the tennis set was provided by William Appleton's son-in-law, Arthur Beebe, who purchased it in London where box sets for the new game of lawn tennis were first sold after the Wingfield Provisional Patent for the invention of a portable lawn tennis court was granted on February twenty third, eighteen seventy four, and whereas the first game of lawn tennis on this court was played by James Dwight and Frederick Sears, the older brother of tennis champion Richard Dudley, Dick Sears, in August of eighteen seventy four. Whereas two years later, in August of eighteen seventy six, James Dwight and Frederick Sears held a round robin tennis tournament for fifteen entrants on the same estate in what has been acknowledged as the first lawn tennis tournament in America, and whereas James Dwight was one of the driving forces behind the creation of the U.S. National Lawn Tennis Association and served as its president for twenty one years, was instrumental in establishing the first U.S. National Championships held in Newport in eighteen eighty one, and became known as Father of American Tennis, and whereas Dick Sears became the dominant tennis player of his generation, who won seven U.S. National Men's Singles Championships in Newport from eighteen eighty one to eighteen eighty seven, and the U.S. Men's Doubles Championship for six straight years, eighteen eighty two to eighteen eighty seven, five of those with partner James Dwight, which is unmatched to this day, and whereas the Honorable John Winthrop Sears, the grandson of Dick Sears and Dr. Warren, excuse me, Dr. Richard Warren Dwight, the son of James Dwight, participated in the dedication of the commemorative plaque placed on the old Appleton Estate by the Nahat Historical Society on June thirtieth, nineteen ninety, to remember this historic event and to assure its place in our public memory. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Nahat hereby honors and commemorates the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the first game of lawn tennis in America, played by Dwight and Sears in eighteen seventy four, and also the first lawn tennis tournament played in America in eighteen seventy six, making the hot the birthplace of American tennis by the selectmen of the town of Nahat, Massachusetts, on this eighth day of May, twenty twenty four. So that was a lot of words, but um, happy occasion and uh, pretty interesting. Most of you probably have seen the uh, the sign up, um, up at East Point in what is now uh, the Bozinski's Lawn. Um, so anyway, fun event coming up in July. Um, okay, um, we will now uh, vote to approve an appointment. Um, Gene, do you have that handy, or would you like me to make?
I don't, I don't have the appointment.
Okay, um, and uh, so I'll take, I'll take the motion then. I move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Robert Tibbo to the Nahat, to the Housing Plan Advisory Committee.
Oh, excellent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, discussion. Um, so as many people probably know, um, Mark Collin was the um, Selectman Representative of the Housing Plan Advisory Committee. Uh, Mark is uh, has uh, stepped down, and uh, so Rob will um, assuming he is willing, um, take on that role.
Is he willing?
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, good. Uh, it's, it's not, not an easy assignment, um, but um, appreciate you stepping up, Rob, for sure. Um, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, uh, roll call vote?
Gene, Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye.
Joshua Antrim, aye. Um, we have a few event requests to, um, to vote on. Um, Rob, you wanna take this motion?
Yes, certainly, Josh. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. The Nahat Tennis Incorporated Kids Tennis Program at the Flash Road Tennis Courts from two thirty PM to three thirty PM on May twenty eighth, May thirtieth, June fourth, June fifth, and June eleventh, and from eleven thirty AM to twelve thirty PM on June thirteenth. Also, the Spring Road Basketball League starting May fifteenth through July twenty sixth on weeknights at the Spring Road Basketball Courts with games at five PM, six PM, and seven PM, and the Men's Springs Summer Softball League from May third to August thirtieth on weeknights starting at five PM at the Lowland Softball Fields.
Seconded. Um, any discussion?
I do. I have some discussion. I, I, I just, I, I look at this earlier, and I'm looking at the spring basketball, Spring Road Basketball league or pickup. It, it, it doesn't really identify what's going to take place here. Tony, you wanna take us through this? It's uh, it's confusing.
It's a, it's a basketball league that's actually been, you know, they've been playing down there last summer as well. I think it, I think this might be the third year. Uh, it's a um, young man's group of uh, folks who have a few different teams and they play on weeknights. Uh, I don't, I don't even, I, I don't know if they play three, three games per night, one hour each. Um, maybe they play, some, some nights they play less, um, but it's it's a, it's a league, uh, that's, that's asked for a recreational permit.
And that, but my suspicion is that that's coming from outside. Dan, have you looked at this?
No, I have not seen it.
The reason, if you read through it, 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 it begs more questions, and, and I just would like to to um, identify those, is when, as you go through it, I, I think it's an Nahat resident that's asking for this. Is this a regular form that we use, Tony?
Yes.
And i- is asking for this, and um, it's generally in, in, in a simple format. It's, it's a, a league or a pickup. It's fifty or more participants with the option of having ten cars parked down there. But where I got caught up in this is it's, it's it's second page, public access must be guaranteed at all times to outdoor venues in publicly owned lands. And it doesn't mention any responsibility for lockup at night. Rehearsals require preauthorization. Is this our language?
I'm trying to find where you're reading that.
It's under the required releases? First bullet?
Public access must be granted at all times to outdoor venues in publicly owned lands. Rehearsals require preauthorization. I think this is just standard language because oftentimes, some of these are gonna apply to indoor sites or outdoor sites, you know, it, uh, I think it's just kind of standard language that is applied to all of these permits.
Yeah. Definitely, as we talk about amplified music and food services and tents and.
Right, right, yeah.
But does, does that, oh, does that open this up to anything that they want to do there, other than a pickup basketball game?
No, they're not, they're not doing anything but uh, their basketball league. Uh, we've talked, we talked to them in the past about parking and making sure that the gate is locked. Uh, they're, they're fully aware of, you know, those items.
So that's boilerplate, that is, doesn't necessarily have anything to do with them directly.
Right.
Yeah.
If you open up the uh, permit for the softball league, it's gonna have the same stuff.
And we, we got this win. I, I'm just, I'm looking at the timeframe here. This, this starts next week and we're getting it tonight. I would have thought we would have had an opportunity to look at this. I'm, I'm just thinking about this in terms of we've got, you know, we just spent, I don't know, what did we spend on, on the uh, on Spring Road? Three hundred thousand dollars or a hundred fifty thousand dollars or somewhere in that vicinity?
Not a, that was, that was Flash Road. Spring Road was less.
Okay, so we've got an all brand new court. I wanna be sure that the opportunities there for the kids in town before we allow outside groups to come in, and I, I guess you call it a, not a lease, but a contract to play basketball. Hey, nobody loves basketball more than I do.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're gonna have kids from town, kids from out of town. It's, it's kids who grew up either here or in Swampscott that were part of this league. Um, you know, it's, or the surrounding area. They were there last year. There was no issue or conflict. It's later in the evening. There's, the court's wide open all day long. And, and it's only weeknight, so weekends it's wide open as well.
Okay.
And the, the applicant is a Nahat resident, um, from uh, Sixth White Way.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion, Gene? Any other comments?
No.
Uh, Tony, a quick question. Have, have they ever talked to you about the amplification system that they're using down there? It's uh, like a Bluetooth speaker. It's impressive.
Impressively annoying, or?
No, 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 no. I, I mean, it's, it's, it is loud. Uh, it's, it's very loud. I, I, I see that you're, uh, Tony is listed as the, as, as the uh, person uh, they need to be speaking with about that. I don't know if they've ever talked to you about it, Tony, but it is quite loud. Uh, I don't know that we've had any complaints, and, and I, I think, I think that's wonderful. Uh, I just want you to be aware of it, uh, just in cases, there's, you know, something should come up. It, it is, I can hear it from Fox Hill Road very clearly. I think, I, I, I think I had a conversation with them last year because there were some issues. I think, I, I, I think I had a conversation with them last year because there were some issues with parking and cleaning up and and music might have been a part of it, um, and, and locking the gate. Um. And you know, there was, as soon as I had that conversation with them, it, it seemed to be cleaned up. Uh, so I can reiterate the importance of that. They seem to be fully understanding of you know, wanting to make sure that they don't upset anyone uh by way of using the, using the uh, the park. Uh, so I, they're amenable to, um, you know, any of our concerns.
Uh, I, that's, that's good news. I, I mean, I want, I want this to, to continue to be successful for everyone. I, I, I'm just kind of raising a, a caution flag here that, that they may want to keep an eye on that, just, just to avoid problems further down the road.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll relay it.
Tony, is there some way we can eliminate the music? It's not really necessary to a basketball league.
Or, or maybe we can um, you know, see how it goes. I mean, uh, the whole point of having parks is to, you know, for people to enjoy them, but obviously we need to be courteous and respectful of the neighbors and um, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just talk to them and I'll say if we get any complaints, then they risk losing their permit or they, or risk losing the ability to have music.
I, I honestly, I have to say, I, I do not agree with music. You know, we're we're, we're allowing this to take place. We, we're tying up the courts at the three, minimum three hours. Um, and it's, it's all about basketball. It's not about having music playing, particularly in a residential community. Just, it just, uh, it just hits me the wrong way. I'm sorry.
Tony, could you talk to them about um eliminating or at least keeping the music down to a level that would, would not be audible beyond the court area?
Yeah, I'll have that discussion with them. I, I don't think we should have a, a different rule for them and, and other recreational uses or, or, or events that take place. I, I, I would, I would I think the right way is to explain to them to be respectful of the neighbors uh, related to parking, cleanup, sound. And you know, that's part of doing, that's part of the, part of the permit. So I'll relay that and um if, if they, if we run into any issues, we'll deal with it that way. I, I think that's probably the best way to go.
I'm good with that, Tony.
Have we, uh, this indemnification agreement, is that boilerplate as well?
Yes.
Is, is somebody signed off on that? I don't see any signatures. I'd like, I'd like to see that.
Um, we vote on it tonight. I'm looking for the.
It, this isn't, looks like an electronic form, Tony. They, they're just checking off, I agree and, and uh, I agree as far as the indemnification required releases. Uh, I, I'm, is this an electronic form?
Yes.
Okay, so they basically the person who has petitioned the use of this. We have his name.
And they do have to provide um certificate of insurance.
Yeah, I don't see that attached to this, what's in your.
Attached, but it's it's checked. But I know, I think um, for example, on the and the other event, the uh, the Johnson School Tennis Collaboration, I know they had to provide some insurance certification.
Right, and I don't see that attached on theirs either. Um, it's probably, it's probably in Kristen's documents at the town hall.
Um, hmm, could I? Andrea Googles, are you able to unmute yourself? Um, were you required to provide um insurance certification for the, the tennis program?
I was, the form that I was asked to fill out required or had a checkbox for that. So I, I did uh get the declaration pages and attached them.
Yep, so probably Kristen has the same for the basketball, but um wasn't included in there. Yeah. Package here. Can we, can, Tony, can you just have Kristen double check that we have um those insurance forms and let us know by email tomorrow?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, yeah, and um, since you're here, Andrea, thanks for um working with our enthusiastic principal, Kevin Andrews at, at the Johnson School. What a great thing for the kids to do after school. As the weather gets nice, they just uh walk over to Flash Road from the Johnson School and uh get some tennis lessons from professional instructors. So um, well, thank you and Ke- and Kevin for arranging that.
Thank you for.
Tennis heavy uh meeting tonight here, but.
That's right. I appreciate it. And thank you for uh proposing the resolution and, and reading that long-winded. I, I'm guessing that maybe Peter wrote that for you.
It was a long one, but.
No, we're looking forward to it and, and it's a great collaboration. And just to add on to that, the third grade at the school is doing a little bit of a project. So each of the students were asked to put together sort of an artistic view and a little historical view of what tennis in Nahat in 1874 might have been like. So they've been busy going to the library, going to the Historical Society, and I'm looking forward to their presentations.
That's great, yeah. Um, is there any other discussion on these uh three events? We got requests. A hearing and seeing none, uh, roll call vote?
Rob Tibbo, I.
Gene?
Gene, can you?
Josh, ever lie? Um, and the next item on the agenda is um the Housing Advisory and Subcommittee Update. Um is uh Michelle Cappano on the line to give us an update on that? Michelle is the, the Chair of that committee. Um. You able to give us an update on that, Michelle?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, in terms of where we are in the next steps in the process, we have the document with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen for their final comments. We're collecting those and we hope to wrap up sometime after May 20th. And then I will be coordinating with the Town Administrator, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board on when we will schedule a joint meeting to review the final document and vote to adopt the plan and send it to the state. Um, I want to thank the community because we received a tremendous amount of feedback during the last 18 months of this process. And without the community input in the public process, we would not have this housing production plan. So I appreciate our, our citizens that have attended our meetings, who have attended the public forum, who participated in this online survey. Um, we really, you know, looked at all of this feedback to help create this plan. So thank you.
Um, thanks for the update, Michelle. Um, you know, it's not it's uh, it's not an easy process. Um, a lot of opinions about this plan. Um a lot of work's gone into it and um, you know, I think uh I'm, I'm glad to see it, it moving forward. Um, but recognizing that is definitely not an easy process. So um, thanks to you, Michelle, and all the others that have contributed. And as you said, all the citizens that have you know, let their opinions be known and their suggestions and, and all that, you know, um we uh, we're all in this together and um, we'll do the best we can with this plan. Um, ongoing business. Um we don't have anything uh listed here, but um I thought um uh, Gene, Rob, and Tony, we should mention that um we did um release the RFP for brokers uh for um to uh see who uh earns the, the uh honor of um selling the lots, the Coast Guard housing lots. Um you know, it's not, it was not an easy process. It's, you know, uh, many of us have probably sold houses and we go to a broker and say, okay, you know, you want to sell my house? Sure. What's your commission? Great, and you're done. But um with this process, it's a lot more complicated. Uh, we have to abide by the um um, the, the procurement uh requirements and back and forth between lawyers and so on. And you know, a lot of people had input on this uh RFP. Uh, so it took longer to get out um than we had hoped, but um it has been released and um all the uh, all the proposals are due. Uh, I believe it's May 28th, the day after um Memorial Day. Is that correct, Tony?
The day after Memorial Day, Tuesday.
Yeah, the 28th, yeah. Uh, is, did you have anything else to add or?
Uh, once it goes live, any questions from um bidders uh have to go through a pro- a process. According to procurement law, it has to be submitted to the town and then those questions and answers are published for all prospective bidders uh to be aware of. And the reason we have to wait until Monday is because of the Goods and Services Bulletin is published on a uh bi-weekly basis. So we had, we kind of missed the first one, so we, we get pushed to Monday's uh posting.
Um, yeah, and, and then once those proposals are received, it'll be reviewed by a um a committee of three people, right? Um, to, to select the uh winning broker and then uh hopefully the um, the first lot will go on sale shortly thereafter.
Uh, we're going to work on the RFP documents uh between now and then uh for the actual sale of the property. So when, if we do get a um a competitive proposal from a brokerage firm and we uh want to award a contract to them to join us on this effort, we'll be able to, you know, catch them up to speed really quickly and turn it around quickly. Uh, so we'll be working on those documents over the next few weeks with legal counsel.
And um, just to add to that, you know, uh, we certainly are hoping for competitive um proposals uh without saying what, what that is, you know. To my mind, it's a proposal that um is fair and beneficial to the town of Nahat because this, you know, any commissions or fees paid is um you know, that's taxpayer money. So um, we want to maximize our, our benefit for the town throughout this process. Um, I don't know anyone, did anyone else have any um ongoing business that they wanted to mention while we're here?
Yeah, if, if I could, and, and I know it's not on the agenda. But um, are we going to, to pick up on hazard mitigation? So that we start to develop some, some plans on, on how to how to o- oversee the, the, any progress we can make with respect to our shoreline.
Yeah, um, well, there's a, we do have a, an approved hazard.
I was about to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Gene.
Okay, but my suggestion would be, I'm bringing it up because I'm thinking that maybe the next meeting or the meeting after or meetings thereafter, we, we address this and start talking about it because every other town, city is getting heavily involved in this. I think we need to have a plan sooner than later. Just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, so I guess I have a couple of comments on that. We do have an approved hazard mitigation plan. Um, that was approved about a year ago. Um uh, but in addition to that, um, I'm sure you recall that one of the goals we gave Tony this year was to sort of list out um priority projects, many of them related to um coastal resiliency and kind of um list those in order of priority, roughly what the funding is, that sort of thing. And I think, you know, we need to be uh, we need to sort of publicize that. I think it's not
Yes.
as well known. I, it is, you know, it's probably nothing that, you know, Tony and his crew work on more than that. But it's a little bit behind the scenes, I think, to the average citizen. So uh, I definitely agree. We, we need to sort of highlight that and um it's, it's important, I think, for um, for the townspeople to, to sort of set expectations, like um, you know, the, we better go after first. This is like the next tier down. These are the, these are what comes after that. And, and, and the reason for that is because, you know, if someone has a problem in their neighborhood, they might think this is the town's biggest problem, but that might not be the case. So I think it's important to um, you know, to inform our residents and also to sort of um, let them know where things are and priorities and, and all that. So definitely agree.
If, if you work, if you work yourself from the city of Boston on up to Salisbury and the Hamptons up there, you know, every, every month or every two months or every quarter or, or yearly it's the sea level changes. And it's on a regular and consistent basis. And I think they like, uh, we like they need to address this on a regular basis. And I appreciate you stepping in on that and trying to find some consistency with, with uh doing this on, on a more regular basis, publicizing it.
Yeah, so um, since it's not on tonight's agenda, maybe that's as much detail as we should get into. Um, but um, certainly, let's make sure we get that on um the agenda in the near future and kind of walk through that and allow ourselves to deliberate in public. Um, but definitely appreciate the, appreciate the suggestion and thank, thank you for bringing it up, Gene.
Well, again, I know Tony is, is on this. It's, it's just a matter of putting it out there.
Yep, yeah, agreed.
It, it's probably a little too early uh to go too far into detail, but um expect a, an announcement early June of the uh, a lot of Massachusetts coastal communities coming together uh to form a group um that's going to be focusing on kind of a, a, a group effort to um connect with the Commonwealth on ways to improve access to grants and technical assistance related to improving coastal resiliency. And uh, we're going to be a part of that.
Good, that's excellent.
Yeah, great news. All right, um, next is uh preserving East Point. Um, so to review, I think we uh, we talked about this at the last meeting, but um to review on April 16th, um, the judge ruled against Nahat in the summary judgment phase of the eminent domain case. Um, since then, we've had, I think, two executive sessions. Um, and another executive session is following this open session tonight. Um we, um, along with our legal counsel, will be discussing matters related to the court's decision and litigation strategy. Um, and as you'll hear at the close of this meeting, because open meeting discussions may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of a public body, uh, we can't really share more at this time, but um we will be um discussing um our strategy going uh later on this evening. Um, Town Administrator's Report. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you see on the list here, Emerald Road, uh, Fox Hill Road and Lowland Stormwater Updates. Uh, when it comes to Emerald Road, happy to announce that we are done that on Emerald Road. Uh, we ended up going back to do extra work on Pond Street. Um, that four-inch main uh basically corroded itself down to about a one-inch main. So it really needed to be replaced. And since we have a contractor for similar work already under contract, we made an amendment to that contract to get that done. So that's going to help with reliability uh of pressure um in that area. We also, um, Fox Hill Road Waterwork is still ongoing, um, but their uh, Grenice, our contractor, is making significant progress there. Um, they're probably about done and they've.
And they've init- and then and they've uh started the Lowland Stormwater Project, which we had a uh a neighborhood meeting on Monday night to discuss those improvements in more detail. I believe their their estimated um project timeline is three to four weeks and it's and it's weather dependent. Um but they are uh we've made a lot of progress in the Lowlands area. This this construction project is uh long overdue. When we investigated the stormwater system in that neighborhood, it was almost all of it needed to be completely replaced uh or enhanced or or expanded upon. So we're doing a um a huge project down there and uh excited that we're, we got shovels in the ground after many years of uh advocating and studying and designing and permitting and whatnot. Uh town meeting prep uh last Friday morning, I had a I uh presented to the uh Village Church Community Breakfast. Uh last night, uh I had a public meeting, a town in town meeting informational session on Zoom. On Friday, I will hold, uh I will have office hours from ten to noon uh for one-on-one conversations if anybody's interested. And I'll be doing the same thing next week. Uh when we uh Tuesday night at six thirty, a uh informational session for town meeting and Friday, office hours from ten to noon. Uh Thursday night, we have our um annual joint meeting with the Finance Committee, the Town Moderator, Town Council. The Chairwoman of the Community Preservation Committee, Town Clerk, and we go through our, we do our uh our rehearsal of motions um uh at the Town Hall. So a lot, a lot going on. I can't believe town meeting is uh less than two weeks away. As I mentioned in my in my in those informational sessions, that this process starts in November. And it involves a lot of uh employees, but it also involves a lot of volunteers uh from the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Committee, any committees that uh uh submitted any type of articles or CPC applications, uh the Planning Board, your, you know, the Board of Selectmen, uh the Town Moderator, the Town Clerk. There's so much that goes into getting ready for town meeting. So um it's been a lot, it's been a long uh a long road to this point, but we're ready to go. And uh hopefully we have some good turnout in these info sessions and good turnout next Saturday.
Great. Anything else, Tony?
No, that's all I have for now.
Yeah. All right. Well, um thanks for all the prep for uh by you and um everyone else for town meeting. You know, this is, this is everyone's chance uh to get out and vote um on the future of our town. So please show up at town meeting. Um let's see, next up is uh did uh Gene or Rob, did you have anything else you wanted to add or ask Tony about for updates or anything?
No, you you know, uh Tony, maybe just a quick update on what our schedule looks like for the next two weeks. We can, you know what? We can do that separately.
Well, as far as as far as like uh like uh committee meetings and things like that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, as I mentioned, so uh next week, um on Tuesday night, the fourteenth, I'll be doing an informational session. And then on the sixteenth, we have our joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the and the Moderator and Counsel and Town Clerk. Um and then town meeting is the eighteenth. There may be other uh committees meeting next week as well. But for as far as.
We won't ma- meet as a board until
The twenty second.
Twenty second.
Yep.
Hey, and if I could, I I attended Tony's informational session last night. And um anybody that can should attend one of those. It's it's really enlightening, I guess, because everything you think you know, you don't know. And 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 everything you want to know more about, you learn. So it's really a a a plus if anybody out there, there's enough social advertising to get people there. It's well worth your time.
Thank you, Gene.
Yeah. Okay, um next up is Citizens Forum. So if you have any anybody that has any questions or comments, should uh try to uh unmute themselves. Uh please state your name and address uh before your comment and um um go ahead. Okay, George Mahoven, I see your hand up. Are you able to unmute yourself?
George Mahoven, sixty-four, Langs Road, Nahat, Mass. Um one question or two questions, actually, on the Nahat Housing Production Plan. Why isn't the town allowed to vote on this instead of having a committee? Not even the uh Planning Board that's that's planning this all out. It seems like it's Michelle and Tony.
Well.
And I think that um the changes it's gonna make to this town, we we, the people of the Hots should have a vote on this. And I haven't really heard an explanation of why we can't. I know that Michelle has said it's not mandated by the state. Well, it's not mandated by the state that we can't have one. So I don't understand why we aren't. It's gonna change the character of this town for at least my lifetime, if not longer. And I believe the people of this town should have a vote on this, and I don't understand why that we don't. And my second question is, what is going on with my right of way up at the Little Nahats and Wilson Road Corner? Thank you.
Um, okay, I'll take the stab at the first one, George. Um so um so the 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 plan will be voted on by the Board of Selectmen as as representatives of the voters of Nahat and the Planning Board as representatives of voting voters of Nahat. Um uh so that is the approach where um that's been selected. Um and to your second question, I don't know that anything new has happened, but I'd defer to um Tony and Dan's grip on that one. On that particular right right of way.
I can I can chime in on both, Josh.
Okay.
With regard to the first question, uh if the housing production plan resulted in sort of zoning changes, yes, town meeting will have a chance to weigh in on that. And I think actually that's the biggest sort of portion of that plan. Um with regard to the right of ways, no, we 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 we're still working on a bunch of other matters and that has not made any progress over the past thirty days.
When you say working on it, Dan, what do you mean by that? Are we going to court? I don't quite understand this. I've talked to a few people and they told me it's on the assessors map. And if it's on the assessors bat- map, it means it's a town-owned property. So I don't understand what's taking so long. It's been thirty-two years since I've been trying to get this right away squared away, thirty-two years. So I don't understand, I understand, excuse me, the law and everything moves slowly. But for thirty-two years, we can't get this squared away? I think that's absurd. And I would like to have the town push more for getting this right away squared away. It's it 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 seems ludicrous to me for thirty-two years. Me as a town cannot do something on a piece of land that I've been told and supposedly all you gotta do is look at the assessors map and it shows it on the assessors map that it's town-owned property. We spent money and got lawyers. They said it was town-owned property. So I don't understand the whole holdup. Plus, these people that that own that property are now blocking the right of way with cinder blocks, barrels, miscellaneous garbage. That's not right. Something's gotta be done and I and I I I can't I don't know what the word is. I can't ex- yeah. How important that is to me and and the town that we get this done. It just, it just seems to be so so inadequate that this town cannot do this in thirty-two years.
No, thanks, thanks for your, thanks for your comments, George. Um it it is frustrating, I know. Um in g- in general, um you know, I certainly would like to see more progress on the rights of ways. I think that one in particular is more complicated. Uh and it's, I think, more, I think Dan will tell you that it's more complicated than what you just described. Uh but um thanks for the input. And Dan, if you wouldn't mind giving us a fifteen, twenty-second snapshot of the legal issue there.
Yes, um it's not town-owned property. It is not town-owned property. So any indication that you may have seen that indicates it is is wrong. Um that's the fight we have. Um and we're going back to deeds from the early nineteen hundreds when the Little Nahat Land Company owned the property and then reserved this sort of right of way to its own self, not the town, its own self. So we're we're fighting over the language of the deeds um regarding that aspect of it.
I understand all that. But how long do you expect this to be dragged out? Thirty-two years? Right away, another thirty-two years before it finally comes to to fruition? What is the holdup? Again, I know everything moves slowly, but that that to me is 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 not moving at all, thirty-two years.
George, if I could just jump in for a minute, you know, you've you've been along with a lot of other people riding that thirty-two-year bus. And in that timeframe, I've been on a lot of committees and I've seen this come up and go down, come up, go down, get worked on, not worked on. And I think honestly, having the the same viewpoint you do, I see progress beginning to be made. I see this board, I see this the Town Administrator. Everybody's working towards getting this resolved now. This is the first real effort I've seen. And I'm just being upfront with you in in the thirty-two years.
Well, a- a- again, it's just timeframe, thirty-two years.
Yeah.
How long do you think this will take out? Uh take take up? It might be an impossible question to answer, but again, frustration uh on my part is it's not being done as quickly as I think it should be. Uh the town thinks, meaning the people of the town that I talk to think it should be done by now too. And I just I just, I just can't fathom it taking that long. Um even as the fact that when Tony became Town Manager, we mentioned all that and it's, it's been on the books and suppose he would look at a little bit more now than it has in the last thirty-two years. How long is this gonna take? Uh 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 and again, it might be. But it just seems like it's it's going nowhere. I I'm I'm and and I'm glad to hear that it it's moving forward. But that's all I've been hearing for for such a long time. And I just, I wish we could get to the to finish line. That's all.
If if, George, it might go nowhere. And I think I I know that's not what we want. I know that's not what you want, but it might go nowhere. Because of, because of, because of the legal uh items that Dan just said. Now, we're doing everything we can to try to overcome that. It's gonna take time and there's really no way to put a timeline on it. Um we're just gonna keep keep pushing, keep trying to fi- figure out a way to to um make it work. But I think the fact that it's, you know, the the deed doesn't, what Dan just said is a is a very large legal hurdle that we have to overcome.
Well, last when you were talking, there was a a um discussion about the the width of the right of way. If can't we just put a five-foot right of way down there and let let the law take its time to figure out who owns the other five feet? At least get a five-foot right of way down there, better than nothing, because that's what I was told before that they complain, they 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 can and um they're claiming that they own five more feet of the right of way than the ten-foot slice that goes down there for the storm drain. So that's the case. If we own five feet of it, why can't we get a five-foot right of way?
Yeah, the pro- the the problem is the five feet that that we believe we have right to, not the part that is easily uh, what's the word?
Accessible.
Accessible.
Well, again, I've I've been up and down that right of way for many, 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 many years.
Yeah, hey, George, um we we gotta let some other people talk.
Okay.
Uh but we definitely understand your concern and share your concern and um we'll give you some updates when we can, I guess. But let's let's give us some other suggestions. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um is there anyone else that wants to unmute themselves and has comment or question? Tony, is there anything in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Um, okay, I guess that's it for um the public session. Um Gina or Rob, do you want to make um the next motion to adjourn it to executive session?
Go ahead. I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, yep, uh all right. I move the Board of Selectmen adjourned to executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Northeastern University Marine Sci- Science Center, four thirty Nahat Road, Nahat, and to discuss pending litigation strategy regarding the town of Nahat versus three Coast Guard housing tenants and I, you know.
Well, I can, I can declare that way after you finish. If the if the Chair declares.
If the Chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating body and we will not return to open meeting.
And uh the Chair does declare that open meeting will have detrimental effect on the negotiating body.
Seconded.
New discussion. Uh seeing and hearing done, roll call vote.
Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibor, aye.
Josh Andromi, thank you, everyone, and um we'll see you next time.
Thank you.